And my board of directors, I want to welcome you this evening to the 2025 Candidates Forum. The debate is facilitated by our Government Relations Committee, and I would like to introduce the Chair of that committee, Mark Thomas.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to meet and hear from our candidates for Town Council. We received over 50 questions this year, so it was great. We're getting a lot of interest, and just so everyone knows, we only have 17 questions for 17 peoples, but all of the questions will be sent to all candidates after the forum. Tonight, there'll be two sessions. The first will be the at-large candidates, and followed by the district candidates. And there'll be a five-minute intermission between each session. We ask that you put your phones into silence, please, and to not talk during the proceeding. And then, at the end, we can all applaud all the candidates. Now, the format for tonight, so each candidate is going to be given one minute for introductory remarks. The moderator, who will introduce in a moment, will pose one question to each candidate. They will have one minute to answer. Then, any other candidate can respond to that same question. They have one minute also. Candidates can only respond to a maximum of four other questions, so they'll have to, they can choose which question they want to respond to that they're not asked. Our timers decide here, they'll keep track of the time for each response and hold up signs signifying 30 seconds, 15 seconds, 5 seconds remaining, and then a stop sign. We will also notify each candidate, well, candidates keep track of your response count, and we'll keep that also. After the final question, each candidate will have one minute to summarize their qualifications and priorities if elected. Also, one candidate, Paul Calhous, cannot maybe be here tonight, so he did give me a prepared statement that I'll read during the introductory part of the district candidates. So for our moderator tonight, I would like to welcome back Professor Gary Rose. He's a professor of political science at the Colleges of Arts and Science at Sacred Heart University, also a Cheshire native. As a political science professor of close to 50 years, Professor Rose specializes in the field of American politics. In addition to his teaching, Professor Rose has published 15 books of various subjects, including Connecticut government, American presidency, constitutional law, and presidential elections. His latest book is James Madison: Public Servant, a biography. So our timers tonight are all from Cheshire High School. They should get an applause for the turnout. Thank you all. So with that, I think we are ready to begin with the introductions. Professor Rose?
Thank you very much, Mark, and once again, thank you to the students who are helping this evening. This is great that you're here. But we're going to begin with candidate introductions, and I think we will just go right down the line, and as Mark noted, you have one minute for an introduction. So we'll begin with Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. I'd like to thank everybody for putting this together tonight, who participated, especially the students who are here to help us. But my name is Jeff Falk. I'm running for Town Council at Large, and I was on the Town Council back 2017 to 2019, and after I lost the reelection bid, I chose to focus on my career. And what got me back into this, well, like a lot of things, this year's budget. I saw that looming $15 million deficit. And my background, which comes in here, besides my Town Council candidacy, I've been Chairman of the Housing Authority, graduated Cheshire High, spent eight years in the military, retired as a Cheshire police officer, and I've got a lot of leadership development skills to give to this town and a lot of time now that I'm semi-retired.
Thank you very much. Ms. Manke?
Hi, I'm Deborah Manke. Thank you very much for setting this up. Thank you for being here to moderate. I'm from an old Cheshire family. My father was born in Cheshire. He grew up in Cheshire, and he loved this town dearly so much that he decided to raise me and my two sisters. I went to Chapman School. I went to Dodg. I graduated from Cheshire High School in 1981. Then I went to UConn, and when I came back, I took a job in Cheshire at Norton School. I was a teacher for 37 years. I was contributing to the community in that way. I retired three years ago, and I raised my own children here, and my hope is that I'm going to get to stay in Cheshire forever, until forever. So my roots are deep, and that's truthful and metaphorical. My father and my grandfather both worked in agriculture. I continue to be part-owner of Tower Farms. Cheshire is my place, and I'm interested in contributing to our town, and so here I am, running for Town Council, and so far, it's been fun and exciting.
Thank you. Mr. Bolger.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jim Bolger. Together with my wife, Meegan, and two sons, Ryan and Michael, I'm committed to ensuring our community, a community that thrives while maintaining the charm of our small-town atmosphere. I believe in keeping taxes stable and promoting transparency for the homeowners, so you can trust that your voices are always heard. Additionally, I'm dedicated to modernizing our schools so we can provide the best education for our children. Together, we can preserve what makes our town special while planning for a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson?
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for this generous opportunity to talk to you all tonight. I'm running for Town Council at Large because we want to continue the great work that our Democratic majority, most oftentimes with the support of our Republican minority, was able to achieve these past two years. I am an educator, a researcher, and an author. I understand the value of data-driven decision-making and transparency. I also understand the importance of listening. We demonstrated that we listened to the people when we were elected in 2023. The former Town Council chose not to listen to hundreds of residents who showed up in opposition to leaving the Chesapeake Health District. Our first action was to overturn that decision because the people had spoken. We demonstrated that we listened again last month when we voted against the proposed North End development. The people spoke eloquently, and we listened to and came to agree with their concerns. We need thoughtful collaboration, not low-minded selfish attacks. I would be honored to be reelected so we can continue this work. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Malone?
Good evening, and thank you. My name is John Malone. Peter? Did that for many years for me. My name is John Malone, and I'm running for my third term as a Town Council Member at Large. I grew up in Hamden, spending a good portion of my younger years in New Haven with my dad, who was a police officer there. I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to move my young family to Cheshire in the mid-'80s. Over the last 40 years, we've raised four children. I've built a successful engineering and landscape architectural practice here, employing almost 200 people throughout the Northeast, with over 100 employees right here in Cheshire, and they still are. I am proud of the many contributions we made to the community over these years, many of these pro bono, such as our linear parks, athletic facilities, our open space, and numerous commercial, industrial, and residential developments, including the work currently being completed at the north end of town. If elected, I will continue to use my business experience and my engineering expertise to do what is in the best interest of the town of Cheshire without regard to political affiliation or outside interests.
Thank you very much. Mr. Talbot?
Time for speed reading. Thank you, Chamber, timekeepers, and our moderator. My name is Peter Talbot, and I have served on the Town Council for 14 years, the last two as Chair and Mayor. Tonight, I hope we stick with ideas and a look forward. This is a great town with amenities I would hold up against any other municipality in the state. These are all non-paid volunteer positions. It's time we get back to civility and work together. I have never seen an election cycle as ugly as this, vicious personal attacks, and disgusting and unnecessary in this town. What's the difference this time? Three things: the political climate nationally, the lack of a local newspaper, and the fact that the Republicans lost in 2023. Personally, I serve on council because I love Cheshire and want to see it prosper. I have no conflicts of interest and do not benefit from my role. I'm not sure everyone can say the same thing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnstone?
Hi, I'm Greg Johnstone, and I'm running for Town Council at Large. My wife and I moved here in 2021 to be closer to our three children, grandkids, and my aging mother-in-law. We spent over 35 years raising our family in Suffield, Connecticut, where I coached youth sports, soccer, and Little League, and was a leader in our local church. I recently retired after a 40-year career as the Director of Sales and Marketing for a company called Unitex Services Group, which was an international service company in the nuclear industry. I'm running because I want to have an impact on the raising property taxes and believe we need more responsible, transparent fiscal management. With my experience, leadership, and teamwork in community service, I'm ready to serve and give back, and I want to help ensure a more affordable, sustainable future for all Cheshire residents.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Professor Rose, and the Chamber of Commerce, who made this forum possible. My name is Greg Wolf, and I am running for reelection as the, as an at-large candidate for Town Council. My family has lived in Cheshire for several generations and has a legacy of public service I hope to continue on Town Council. I believe in governing with integrity, compassion, and transparency. I believe in governing based on facts and not soundbites on the Internet. I believe in making our streets safer for everyone. I believe we can preserve open space and develop our town responsibly and sustainably. I will help to foster a positive attitude in our town, not one based on divisiveness and gotcha politics. Our town should look to attract talent, businesses, and residents who are looking to grow and expand our community, our schools, and infrastructure. Our elected officials should also share those desires. Negativity attracts negativity. We are better than that in Cheshire, and I hope the voters of Cheshire will agree and support me on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bartley?
Good evening. My name is Tom Bartley. Since retiring from a 40-year career at Travelers Insurance, I have served what you would call a five-year apprenticeship in local government here in Cheshire. I currently serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and am the nominating Chair for the Republican Town Committee. The nominating Chair basically was responsible for recruiting our political candidates and also the placement of volunteers in the various boards and commissions in the town. I have acquired a good understanding of how Cheshire's government works and what good government looks like, in particular, the Town Council. I believe that to be successful as a Town Councilor, you need three things: a passion for the job, a vision for the future, and the leadership skills to make sure that you can translate that vision into a reality. As Town Councilor, I have three concurrent goals: keep Cheshire affordable for all of its residents, continue Cheshire's tradition of an excellent school system, and reinforce our sense of community during changing times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Tedesco?
Thank you to everybody who organized the program tonight. My name is Lou Tedesco. I'm a lawyer. I spent most of my career in private practice. Now, I work full-time with the Connecticut Department of Education. My wife, Paula, and I moved to Connecticut 46 years ago. We have three children, Jill, Joseph, and Amy. They all went to Cheshire Public Schools and graduated from Cheshire High School. Paula worked at the Jack and Jill Daycare Center in Cheshire for many years. I've been involved in community activities for almost the entire 46 years, not quite, but almost that, starting with park-and-wreck basketball. I think I have about 19 years of that over three kids. I coached Cheshire's baseball and served as the President of the Cheshire High School Athletic Boosters Club for several years. I ran for office first in 1995, was on the Zoning Board of Appeals for four years. After two-year hiatus, I ran and was elected to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where I stayed for 22 years until last, the end of my term in 2023, when I decided to run for the Town Council in 2023 and lost. But, so I've been out of politics for two years now, except I did serve on the North End Committee to look at the property. So this is my third try at the Town Council, 2023 now and 1997. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will turn now to the questions. And the first question is going to go to Ms. Pearson. Here's the question. How do you plan to balance economic growth with preserving Cheshire's rural character and open space?
Well, fortunately, we have a referendum on the ballot, and this was something we had asked for, a $2 million referendum, potentially reserving $2 million for open space. We discussed whether or not recreational or space where schools could be built would be included in that definition. We ultimately determined no, just preserving open space. So that will be up for the voters, but that's something that I have long advocated for. I've been serving on parks and wrecks for the last five years, and I've long, part of my platform has been to actually advocate for maintenance plans for all of our open-space properties. Right now, we only have maintenance plans for two or three properties. I'm proud to have been part of initiating that on parks and wrecks. That's something that I called for as a Town Councilor, and now as their liaison. That's something we've seen them accomplish. We have remaining open spaces that we need to continue to protect, and I look forward to working with the next Town Council if elected in terms of ensuring that we have these spaces and parks for our residents.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Okay, we will move to the next question, then. The next question will go to Mr. Talbot. Do you believe that remaining with the Chesapeake Health District two years after the decision was the right choice, given the impact on taxpayers, including higher rates and fees, the missed opportunity to move into a town-owned building, the turnover of three health directors, and substantial staff changes? There's a lot of questions built into one question there.
Absolutely. Thank you. As Ms. Pearson mentioned during her opening remarks, the people had spoken. It was very clear that they wanted to stay with Chesapeake. Since before the '23 election, the Board Chair was a Cheshire Republican appointee. In April of '24, when the Health Director left for another job, the Chair hired and later fired a consulting firm that was brought in to help with the hiring process. The Chair in September finally appointed a new Health Director. He only lasted two months and stated his resignation letter that his position had been mischaracterized by the Chair. A new director has finally been hired, the Chair has resigned, and a new Board Chair has been appointed. Those two positions are now turning around what was a very difficult situation. I'm confident that with those two key roles filled, the Chesapeake Health District will continue to serve the tri-town communities as they have come to expect.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Yes, Mr. Malone?
I'll respond. Thank you, Peter. And I was one of the council members at the time who voted to move on from Chesapeake because the facts, the facts available to us supported that decision. It wasn't a popular decision by the people that were in the room, but I felt it was the right decision for the town of Cheshire. We've paid for that for the last two years substantially, financially, and with tremendous chaos. I will agree, having attended Chesapeake's meeting last night as an observer, that Chesapeake seems to be finally moving in the right direction, but not without a lot of interference by members of the council in an agency that's not a, that's not a town agency, and not a lot of financial burden on our community that could have been avoided. I think it's a decision that should have been made differently.
Are there any further responses?
Yes. One of the conditions that reversed the decision of the prior Town Council was that we were promised a memorandum of understanding, basically a report card. We were led to believe as citizens that one of the reasons that we were going to stay is that Chesapeake was going to be reformed, the level of accountability was going to increase, and that we Cheshire citizens would have much more insight into how Chesapeake ran, where the money was going, and what we could expect. That was a promise made by the sitting Town Councilors here. That promise was not met. So I realize that there's been a lot of disruption, but the reality is, when you make a decision to do something and you make promises to the citizens, you should keep those promises.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson?
As Mayor Talbot expressed, the real issue we came to find was actually the Republican-appointed Chair of that Board of Directors, and that was a common factor in regards to the subsequent problems we then faced the ensuing two years, and that's something that Mr. Malone also corroborated here. That move, that vote against the people's will resulted in creating much distrust amongst our neighbors at Woolcott and Prospect, who also use Chesapeake or part of the Chesapeake Health District. It created much mistrust with Sutherlandton Health District, and it has taken some time to build up that trust again. And so I stand firm by, we made the right decision. Unfortunately, there were many other issues that were at play that resulted in difficulties at Chesapeake, but they now have a new Health Director. We are on a new road, and I look forward to seeing what Chesapeake provides for our community.
Thank you. Any other responses? Okay, we'll move on to the next question. This will be directed to Mr. Falk. What would you have done differently in regards to the situation with the Dog Pound?
With the Dog Pound, one thing I looked at was when they hired an outside firm to conduct the investigation. They didn't give that firm a due date. Any contractor you hire to do work in your house to do anything, you say, okay, when's it going to be done? That was one of the biggest questions I heard from people at the Town Council meetings, when's it going to be done? And I understand there's not a lot you can talk about. There's talk of issues that happened beforehand that were reported by people but never brought up, and yes, at the end of the day, they had a report, but I think there's something you need to look at in after-action review of how it all came about. Get some definitive answers and not just, well, I heard this, well, I heard that, and everybody's festering. You need to come up with, you know, the answers so we don't repeat the same mistakes we have.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Wolf?
What I'll have to say about that in regard to the timeline, as a former police officer, you'd understand investigations don't have a timeline. You work the investigation until you get to a completion. As a council, we followed the process. We took advice from the investigation, or not from, from our attorney, as to the process that we should be taking. Setting an arbitrary date would mean that some things probably would be left out, and as a council, we wanted a full and complete investigation, with nothing left behind, and that's what we got. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
All right. So, yes, I was a Cheshire police officer for my career, and I investigated criminal matters, which, no, you can't put a timeline on, but you work them methodically and as best as you can. When you're investigating a civil matter, there was no criminal element to this investigation. Yes, you don't rush it, but you can put a timeline on it. Criminal, civil, two different things.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Malone?
I'd just like to add one thing. I think that all of us on the council, myself included, were guilty of not being wholesome or holistic in our view of this. We did look at legally what we were able to do, and we took the advice of our town attorney, which was, which was provided appropriately, but we didn't dig deeper. We didn't look at the human issues here. We didn't look at the health of the animals in a way that was, was more open, and I think we missed things that were brought to our attention by individuals in this community who came forward and raised concerns that we were not aware of and we should have probably been aware of, and we're all guilty of not doing enough to dig deeper during this process.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Tedesco?
Is this working now? But I have read the consent order that the town entered into with respect to this, and it seems to me that what, what is needed is more oversight. The dog facility should have regular oversight by persons to make sure that some of the things that were included in this consent order now don't happen again. A lot of it was maintenance, bad handling of food, chipped paint, troughs that didn't fit right, a number of things. But constant monitoring can avoid these things, and, and I think that's what we need for the future, but let's move on. This is a horrible situation. We all love dogs. I've had dogs. Most people have had dogs. Let's take what we can learn from this and move ahead.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question will be to Mr. Bartley. How do you plan to hold taxes at their current level?
I have no plans to hold taxes at their current level. I'm not going to make promises that I can't keep. What I am going to do is I can make a promise that I will institute a system that I think makes more sense to us from a budgeting standpoint. I think what we need to do is to first make sure we know what we can afford at the front end of the budgeting process. We don't wait until the end of the budgeting process to figure out what we can spend, which means I think that the Town Council can be more effective in terms of managing the process by deciding early what it is we can afford as a town, informing the Board of Education and also the Superintendent of Schools as to how much we can afford, as well as our, our Town Manager. So I think more concise, better management at the front end can help us with the process. Now, I'm not, as I said, I'm not going to make any promises about trying to hold taxes at a certain number when I have no numbers in front of me, no knowledge of what the grant list is going to look like, nor any expectation as to any, any concrete information. What I can do is I can promise on working hard to make sure we do it right, and we do it right the first time.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Pearson?
Having served on my university's Planning and Budget Committee for the last six years, I work at Central Connecticut State University, where I'm a professor of sociology, and having served on this Town Council for the last two years, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Bartley, but that is not possible. That is not a proper way to, and it's not a realistic way, to approach one's budget. Even during the budget season, things change and evolve, and all I will say is, and I brought it today just as a, as a prop, right? We went through every single page. We went through line item, and if you really want to sit down and watch hours and hours of really fun budget meetings, they're all on YouTube, and they're available for the public to watch. Every one of us went through these line items. The Board of Ed does the same thing with the Board of Ed budget, and the Board of Ed budget is the single biggest line item in our budget. It is. And the biggest expense in our town are our people, and so if we are going to be compensating our employees, our town employees adequately for the incredible services they provide and continue to provide the services our community deserves, I welcome you to try, I challenge you to find what you would have cut this last budget season.
Well, you, you had no recommendations for cuts when it came to the Board of Education because I did look at the tapes. Number one. Number two, I disagree with you, is that my business experience tells me that you, you don't start by telling everybody, hey, look, go, tell me what you want to spend. You start by telling them what we can afford to spend. That's the way businesses run, if it's going to be successful. So the idea that we can't do things differently and do it more efficiently, I reject, because that means that you, you're not open to change, and you're not open to try and figure things out and better plan for the future. It was just at your own meeting, I think, when you were doing the last meeting, when you, were you looking at the, there was a budget where you guys were setting 3.5% target for capital spending. So you chose to set a target for capital spending at your last capital budget meeting. Why wouldn't you apply the exact same thought process for the reg, regular budget cycle? So saying that things can't get done is not really a good answer for trying to stay ahead of things. So.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Would you like to respond?
Are we allowed to respond?
Yeah.
It counts. It counts.
It counts. It counts as a response.
I just wanted to respond to what Mr. Bartley said in terms that the capital budget functions differently than the operating budget, and so what you are describing, yes, indeed, we identified a target, and we had discussion regarding what that target would look like, and that was a target, but when we began with the operating budget, we began with the experts in the room. We began with our Town Manager. We began with all of the, the managers and directors for all of the departments. They came to us. They explained where they could cut because they knew this was a difficult year as well, and they all cut back tremendously, right? We started off with a $15 million gap, and we were able to whittle that down. We started off with a $15 million gap, and we were able to whittle that down. And so the Board of Ed does the same thing, and I trust our Board of Education, and I trust our managers in the system. And they go through line by line. I also looked at their books as well, though, just because I was curious. So out of my own curiosity, I look at their books, but I trust the Board of Ed. They're the experts, and so we trust the experts.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Malone.
I'd like to add one thing. I did sit on the Budget Committee for both my terms on the council, and I do think communication is the opportunity for more success in our budget process. As we began our budget process at the Budget Committee for the Town Council, I asked the question, could we talk to the Board of Education Budget Committee and let them know the concerns we have, because we were faced with serious budget concerns? I was told by a member of the committee, well, they're having public hearings now. You can go speak at their hearings. I wanted to talk to them as a member of the Town Council, not as a citizen. We received the Board of Education budget with statements from our superintendent suggesting that there was substantial economic expansion and grand list growth in the town, and that prosperity was the context of his budget. There was no communication, and that lack of communication was hurtful to the community.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Talbot.
12.6% is what you'll hear. What you won't hear is that Mr. Walsh and Mr. Malone voted for the '24 budget. This past year, they offered no solutions, other than Mr. Vellebers cut $650,000 from the schools. He had no idea what it would do to staffing or programs, just cut. His request would have saved the average taxpayer $4.23 per month, less than a cup of coffee at one of our local shops. We started this year in a $15 million hole because of lost revenue from the feds, the state, and started paying the debt on the two new elementary schools that passed at referendum by 18 points. The Democratic majority eliminated all the nice-to-haves and kept only the must-haves. The budget that passed was not something any of us wanted, but it was a compromise between austerity and eliminating critical services. If someone tonight says, cut the budget, make sure they give you specifics on exactly which of your services they intend to eliminate.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Falk.
All right, so when it came to the budget, I told you all in the beginning, that's why I got involved again with the council, looking at a $15 million shortfall. When I was on the council prior to, I think in '18 or '19, we looked at a $10 million shortfall, which was a ton, because the state was going to pull money. I sat in at a lot of budget meetings, watched them on YouTube, gathered information, and over the months, I've been looking at stuff, looking at what we've done. Some things are, you know, we can't avoid, reevaluations, inflation, but a few of the things we could have avoided, not using ARPA funds towards the budget, limiting some of the debt service or general fund money, not having it be two and a quarter million, two-plus million, that are one-time fixes, just like in this year's budget. A lot of people didn't notice, but $75,000 was taken out of the Police and Fires Gift Account Fund, one-time fixes, which is going to be a problem for next year.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the next question. This will be directed to Ms. Mantke. What do you feel is Cheshire's biggest challenge, and how do you propose to solve it?
That's a big question. I think the biggest challenge right now is keeping our town sustainable and keeping it, the town that we know and love. I know we're talking about taxes right now. I'm on a fixed income, so I think about those things, but I also know that when, that the services that we have are utilized by the people in the town, and I don't know what you would cut to keep things balanced. And I think the big word for me is balance, that there are two things we want to keep. We do want our town to grow sustainably, slowly, and thoughtfully, but we also want to make sure that we keep the charm that our town has.
Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to respond to that? Mr. Bartley?
Yeah. Am I on my number third minute, I think I'm at right now?
You're on your third.
Yeah.
Well, you've had one question and one response. You have.
I'd like to reclaim my time, please.
Okay, all right, okay.
You know, I think that, as I sat back and I was thinking about running, and I tried to figure out what I would do really differently, and we have conversations about budget, we have conversations about how to treat each other civilly and all that kind of good stuff. I think, really what I think this town's been missing for a number of years is our ability to talk to each other civilly and understand exactly what we mean by who we are as Cheshireites. It was three or four, five years ago when we had a newspaper that I knew what houses were being sold, what the football scores were. We had editorials that can go into the newspaper, and we lost something really, really important when we lost the Cheshire Herald. And I think that one of the initiatives that I would really, really like to push and make sure that, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, is that the town needs to start engaging in active ways, proactive ways, to broadly communicate with all of its citizens, so that if the North End comes up, we know ahead of time. If the dog situation comes up, we know ahead of time, and that we have a way to communicate and know what's going on throughout the entire community, and we actually do it on purpose.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Talbot.
Mr. Bartley, I love that response. Civility is huge, because when you look at, and Ms. Pearson brought this up in comments earlier, when you look at the town council votes over the past two years, it's safe to say that 95% of the votes that are taken by the town council are unanimous all the way down the line, both sides of the political aisle. So what changes? What changes is we get into an election season. It becomes the odd year. It becomes July, August. The candidates have been chosen, and what happens? What's happened and is what is happening now. So, Mr. Bartley, I couldn't agree with you more. I said it during my opening, civility is the key. We all love this town, and we should be able to work together to move it forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bulger.
The hard part about Cheshire is, everybody wants it to remain the same, but modernize and move forward at the same time. Cheshire's tax burden is 75% homeowner-driven. That means 25% of it is on commercial buildings, industry, and things like that. I think we would all like to see it 60-40, 50-50, but at the same time, we have a, you know, the North End project was absolutely stunning. The job they did in the park down here, those were things that were absolutely great to do, but sometimes we do have to say, you know what, there's nice-to-haves and must-haves, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson.
And I realize this is my last response. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Bartley, and I wanted to say, I agree 100%, right? Losing the Cheshire Herald was a huge loss in this community, but fortunately, we do have a new employee. I know it's been announced, I don't know publicly, or it will be soon, Communication and Community Engagement Director. And at the Sustainability Fair the other weekend, actually, I was talking with Doug Levens of the YMCA, and we were talking about how difficult it is, he had just held a mental health fair the weekend before, and it just wasn't attended as well as he might have liked, and we talked about the difficulty of promoting these wonderful events that our local organizations organize in our community, and this is a person who will be able to assist us with that. And I don't see Dr. or Mr. Kimball in the room, but I'm hoping that this person perhaps will have a newsletter. I would love to see every town council meeting, we receive a newsletter from our town manager. In that newsletter is an overview of all of the wonderful things that are happening via our municipal employees, but this could be a place as well that our Chamber of Commerce, our businesses, our small organizations could announce events, and we could communicate to the community again in a different way. And so I'm hoping that we have some, I know we have some promise here, and I'm looking forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you. Yep, that's it. Yes, sir, Mr. Johnstone.
I'm the new guy on the block, so I don't have as much history as the rest of the people on the panel, but I did attend that first meeting on the new North End project, not the one that's already completed. And I sat through the, that whole presentation by the engineers, and I said, this sounds like a really well-thought-out, good idea to help reduce our tax burden. And then I spent the next hour and a half or two hours, maybe three hours, listening to all the people talk about it. And my conclusion after watching all that was that, like what Fiona said and what Tom said, the communication to the people about what was going on, it was their main concern. So if we can, whether it's a newsletter, whether it's the new PR person, if we can do that, I think it's going to go a long way in making the town better.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next question here, for Mr. Wolf. There was much talk about the West Main Street district development into a town center area. What is your position on that development?
I think that that development is one of the most critical bits to the advancement of our town. This town doesn't have a town center like a traditional New England town does. I think that is the spot in this town where it's ripe for that. Adding a, some design standards would be great, have a little, an idea, having that be the idea of a universal look to that area. I think it can be an economic driver. I can think it can be an arch driver, based on the work that has been done at Ball and Socket. I think it's, working with the state to make sure the traffic flows better, it would be critical, but that, those are partnerships that we can have. There was a grant that was awarded to do some studies that has just sat idle. I'm not sure where that stands. I think that that's kind of stuck at planning and zoning right now, to be honest. There are some good ideas in there that I think we should pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to respond to that? Okay, go to Mr. Bulger. What do you feel are the major reasons for traffic congestion on Route 10, or I should say, Routes 10, 68, and 70? And what steps would you recommend alleviating the traffic?
Thanks a lot. Let me start by saying that. Thanks a lot. The number one issue in town. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I think that, again, Cheshire grew so exponentially fast in the last 25 years, from a farming town to what it is now, and it's just, there's really only three ways to get into town, and Route 10 is our main thoroughfare. I believe the traffic lights that have been installed in the last couple of years have helped. If they stay running, that helps even more. The main thing is just looking at future buildings, apartments, whatever we choose to do with our areas, everything has to be traffic-based to start, because it took me 45 minutes to get from Calcanie to the North End just this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Wolf.
I would just like to point out that this council, we initiated a town-wide mobility study, traffic study, to address some of these concerns, get an idea of where we can do some work to improve intersections, improve access to the rail trail from various places, find intersections that can be done better. Those are steps that we can take to move along. Next year, there will be a statewide project to link the traffic signals from one end of town to the other, which will help. But those are the kind of things that, you know, working with, the council will work with this traffic study to move these, the ideas that they come up with forward, and I think it's important to have a council that will engage that study and move the ideas forward.
This question goes to Mr. Tedesco. What do the candidates propose to help seniors with the ever-increasing tax burden?
Well, being a senior myself now, I suppose it should be something of special interest to me. It seems to me that what you have to do is evaluate whether you can in fact have some limitation on taxes for seniors or freezing taxes on seniors as appropriate, keeping in mind that when you do that, you know, when you do that, that increases perhaps the taxes that everybody else will have to pay, because somebody has to make up the slack. But it seems to me that the direct way to do it is by doing that, is by looking at taxes. Now, that may not apply to all seniors. Some seniors are on a fixed income. I still have a job. It perhaps wouldn't apply to somebody like myself who still works full-time and has a regular income, but some, but some general tax controls, I guess, for seniors is probably the way to do it, and it's something we should consider doing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnstone.
I'm not sure of the exact requirement, but in one of our meetings over the last several months, it was brought up that there is in the books in Cheshire a reduction in real estate taxes to seniors based on income, and maybe it's time with the times have changed that we can relook at that that's on the books and make sure that it's, makes more sense with the current distribution of population in town.
Thank you. Anybody else like to respond? Mr. Talbot.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnstone is correct. There is, there is something on the books that will, that will help seniors. It is income-based. The state sets those rates for us on an annual basis. We look at them, and we not only utilize what the state gives us, we go well beyond that to make sure seniors in this town are taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. Bartley.
So sometimes I think seniors are the least-heard members of this town. 20% of the population, last time I checked, some of the census numbers, is over the age of 60. Roughly 20% of the population, I think, is between 0 and 19. So I think as we go through the tax policy, as we go through our tax process and try and figure out how much money this town is willing to spend on various services, we need to understand that it affects our entire community, and many people who are over the age of 60 and are seniors have been here for a long time, raised their families here and have chosen to stay here because of the quality of life, what they've already contributed to the community, and what they're getting back right now. So I think that an awareness of our seniors in terms of how important they are to who we are, and that the nature of this town is very, very important as we set any kind of policy, whether it's fiscal policy, how we spend our money, and where our priorities are.
Thank you.
Professor Rose, if I may, could you give the panelists an update as to how many of their questions they've utilized at this point?
Sure, okay, okay. Well, we still have two major questions to go, and one will be going to Mr. Johnstone and Mr. Malone, and the rest of you have already received a question. As far as responses go, Mr. Bartley has three so far. Mr. Bulger has two.
No. Mr. Bartley has responded to five.
I counted, I counted, I counted three.
He responded to question four.
Okay, you want to count four on that? Did you want to count that? Okay, all right, okay. Okay, well, Mr. Bartley then has used up his time.
Yeah, that was my count, too, so I agree.
All right, okay. Mr. Bulger, I have, I have two. I have two. Mr. Falk, I have two responses. Okay. Mr. Johnstone, I have just one response.
No.
Do you have, you have two? Do you have two? Okay, all right, okay.
We didn't ask him to keep this. You've been keeping it, I've been keeping it, but do you agree?
Okay. My record has Malone, Mr. Malone, with three responses. My record has Mylone, Mr. Mylone, with three responses. How's that sound to you? Does that sound okay to you? And Deborah Manke, I don't believe you've had any. You've only had one major question. Ms. Pearson has used up her responses. Mr. Talbot, what do you have? Two? You have three, three of those. Mr. Tedesco, I believe he has one. And Mr. Wolf has, I have, three. Two or three? Two or three?
Two.
Two, okay, two, all right. Okay, fine. So does that clarify things for you? So then we have two major questions to come, and one will go to Mr. Johnstone next. And the question is, if elected, what do you plan to do for local businesses?
Good question. One of the things that the town tax base, I think, was brought up earlier, the percent of the town that's basically, our tax base is 75% from the residents. We need to really look at ways to attract businesses to our town. And some of the things that we can do there are tax incentives. I think that when you did that whole North End project, one of the ways you got investors interested in building the infrastructure was to basically tell them they get a tax refund for the sewerage and the general services. So I guess what I'm saying is that we need to go reach out to other people, other towns, and see what they're doing to attract businesses. But I think Cheshire's very attractive right now.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to respond? Mr. Falk.
He's up one of mine. One of the things, being a newer small-business owner, I've had my small business for almost a couple of years now. One of the greatest resources in town is the Chamber of Commerce. They really network, they really get people out there, and this is my first year at the Fall Festival with my small business. I was overwhelmed. I didn't leave my table for the entire time, from 10 till 4:00. It was amazing. A lot of stuff, a lot of leads. And then as a town, you know, as we've talked about before, collaborative efforts, working together and supporting each other. A lot of that has come out of the post-COVID, to support small businesses. Where do I go if I need something? Heinz. Why? Because I support local. Where do I go if I need groceries, down to Big Y or any of those local businesses? And keep that mindset there and utilize the staff here to help out the small businesses when they need it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Tedesco.
Well, it seems to me that part of the way we could help small businesses, perhaps, is just to publicize them, to let people know in the town and in other towns what we actually have in Cheshire for businesses, who they are, what they sell, what they do. Have a, I don't know, a third Saturday for this kind of business and publicize them and encourage people to go to that business. Just get the name out for people. A lot of times I've been shopping with my wife occasionally, and I will go to a store, and I've been in town for many years, and I didn't know it was there, and I didn't know what they sold. Well, publicizing things maybe can help. It doesn't cost much, and it may be of assistance.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then the question will come to you now, the last question. Mr. Tedesco, you, no, you have, I'm sorry, you have a question. Mr. Mylone, rather, Mr. Mylone, I'm sorry. Mr. Mylone. Mr. Mylone. Confused the two of you. Okay. What have you done in the last two years to help local businesses?
Well, let me think. In the last few years? So, I mean, my entire career here locally has been supportive of businesses, so much so that I think I received the Chamber Community Service Award a few years ago for my service to the community. Specifically, over the last couple of years, I mean, from a business perspective, I've supported a reasonable amount of development in the community, provided a lot of personal time to help things move forward. And, but I'm trying to think of one specific thing that I've done. Obviously, as a local resident, I've supported the businesses on an individual basis, but I think that's something we all do. We all do daily. But I'm sorry, I can't think of something other specific that comes to mind.
That's okay. Sure, well, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to respond, who still has time? Mr. Falk?
He's up my last one. One thing I just thought of, of supporting local businesses, is actually through my daughter's nonprofit called Because of the Brave. She started that up by selling T-shirts, taking some veterans out to dinner. Where do we take them out to dinner? At local establishments. You know, Rossini's, Fire'n's, Mabel's, the list goes on. So it's every couple of months, we go through there and take them out to dinner, take them out to lunch, and do that. Other businesses, we utilize to help the veterans if they need some repairs, if they need a little oil, you know, anything that may need. All these local businesses love to support, but we also love to support them. So it's, again, we all work together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnstone.
I think both Tom and Fiona brought this up already about the newsletter or the PR person. But I think Yetta and the Chamber, if we work together with the council to make sure that there's activities where we rotate things per month and feature certain small businesses in town, and get that word out through the newsletter or the PR person. I know what I use right now is just the Cheshire, you know, record on Facebook, and I find out about all the events that are going on in town. And everybody doesn't do that. So we need to get the information out to support certain events each month through the Chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf.
A similar note to everybody. One way that you can support, I have supported, and I'm going to go back to the West Main Street Future Development District, is if you encourage growth in an area and you tell your friends about places to go in town, that grows businesses. That helps. So it's not just using your dollars, it's using your voice to encourage other people to attend events, places that could drive more people to that. It could involve telling people from outside the town what a great town we have, to bring them in. That's something that can help drive businesses, to grow our businesses, to grow our town.
Yes, Mr. Talbot.
So the last two questions really dovetail well together between business enhancement and business, what have you done for business in the past two years? I absolutely encourage people to call Yetta Augur, because they are the ones that drive the business community. So this is my chance to thank the Chamber yet again, so I don't have to use up part of my minute in my close. But I served on the Chamber for nine years. Mr. Mylone and I share a name together on the Sheldon Dill Community Service Award for work in the community and with businesses. But it's absolutely what all of the panelists have said. It's making sure that you're supporting local business, that you're shopping local. There's nothing more critical than giving back to the community. And thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a question you want to go to all. We're ahead of schedule, so we'll go to everyone on this? You want to do this? Okay, fine. It's a good question, too. So we'll ask all of you this. What do you feel is the most important referendum question to vote yes on? We could go left to right. Mr. Falk, why don't you begin?
One of the nice things I saw that was on the referendum, again, there's a lot of the same things, which we always vote for, but one of the things this year is actually the open space. What have residents been looking at, asking for with the whole North End thing? And yes, out of that comes open space. Years ago, we used to allocate that, I don't know, every few years, when the funds would start to run low, to buy more open space. And that is one of the most important things, so we can keep some of what Cheshire is. As I've been here my whole life, yeah, I've seen it change and grow. And even my current boss is looking to help preserve stuff by buying farms so that they don't get built on, so that we can kind of keep Cheshire. If you ever drive through the backroads, it's great, especially up in the North End.
Absolutely open space. I grew up in agricultural family. I do live on the north end of town. I do, my father owned a fairly big piece of property. My greatest memories are growing up on East Johnson Avenue and Cheshire Street and being able to wander down to the river. I would like to think everybody in Cheshire would get to have that same opportunity, to have a place where they could go and wander and enjoy what, just what the land gives. Absolutely open space.
Mr. Bulger.
I would love to say open space, but unfortunately, I'm going to say the turf at the high school. And this is twofold. One, because it gets so much use by everybody in the town, from youth sports all the way up to the high school, and it is at the end of its life for use. I believe that would open us up to a huge liability for injuries and lawsuits pertaining to injuries if the turf was found to be, or we were found to be negligent as a town, not keeping up with turf maintenance or turf replacement. I think because it's our children, because it's used so much, I think that one is very, very important to the town.
Ms. Pearson.
This is Sophie's Choice. Because, yeah, I mean, we need the sprinkler system for the high school. I know the loading dock at the high school is not exciting to vote for at all. We joked about that, right? It's not a sexy project, but it's really needed. The turf is incredibly important. The splash pad, so many people, when Weston and Sampson came and voted for what they wanted Bartlam South to look like, the splash pad was the biggest ask of our community at that time, which is why we pursued that, and it would provide accessible access for individuals who are seeking to cool down in the summer. But I'm the sustainability lady, so I have to say preserving open space. That 1.5 million, putting that aside for open space, is so important to our community. We've lost so many farms, we've lost open space. This is why people, we learned during COVID, right? Our open spaces are so important for our health and our well-being, so I have to say open space.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mylone.
I think open space, continued acquisition of open space is important for the community. I don't think it's the most important thing of our agenda questions if we're going to select this time. I think if an important piece of open space became available, we would find a way to get that done. I prefer, quite frankly, if we had something important relative to open space, to bring it to the community specifically, rather than have an open-ended fund that the council on its own decides what to be used for. I think the issues relative to safety are always the most important. So I would agree with Mr. Bulger that the synthetic field at the high school, which is not used just for sports, but for a lot of community activities, where there's a health issue if it's not replaced, and the sprinklers at the high school are both two more important items.
Mr. Talbot.
I'm going to hedge my bet as well, Professor Rose, because item number one is open space. It's what we hear the most about. It was one of the things that the Democratic majority got added during the capital budget process. Item 1A would be the fire truck. There is nothing more important that we do in this town than to maintain public safety. Same thing for the turf, item 1C. 1D, the sprinkler system at the high school, is equally important. 1E, the splash pad, we've got a lot of money coming from the state that will offset the total cost of that project. So those, you know, all seven, to me, are 1A through, you know, right down the line.
Thank you. Mr. Johnstone.
And I hate to go the party line, but when you're this far down the line, the open space would clearly be the, you know, that's what attracted my wife and I to this town. We've only been here three years, but we came here because of the amount of open space, the feel of the town, and I think that paying a lot of attention to that is probably the single most important thing.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
For me, the safety issues are the most important by far. Redoing the alarm system at the high school and the fire truck are number one and two in my mind. If we had an issue with the sprinkler or the fire alarm system in the high school not working, that would be catastrophic. That would be something that this town would not recover from. So that, by far, for me, is the most important.
Thank you. Mr. Bartley.
I might agree with you. Nothing wrong with that, right? You know, I think that there's a lot of items on the list. Budget, you know, we have, I think, somebody told me, we have 22% of the space in Cheshire is already designated as open space and/or something that we can't develop. So I think open space has always been very important to this town, and it's also been a hallmark of our character and who we are. In terms of priorities, and I agree with John, I am not comfortable with allocating 1.5 million dollars for open space without some kind of constraints as to how we can spend it. I think for something like that, we need to go back to the community and ask for more input before we start spending that kind of money on open space. So that's number one, on this particular, the way this has been drafted. I agree that the turf is most important. It's a big piece of change. Our students are engaged in this, and I think I would make that a top priority if I had to select one.
Thank you. And then Mr. Tedesco.
I've had the benefit of listening to everybody else being the last on the list here. It's hard to see which of these are not important and which of these things we would not want to have. Interesting, when you come to budgeting, that shows some of the difficulties in budgeting, because at some point you have to say no to some things, even if they're good things, and that's hard to do, and this is very hard. I was going to say turf at the high school, in part because I read a little bit about that, and, you know, the folks at the high school have kept this turf four years behind its normal life, which really they should be commended for doing that. They've saved the town the trouble of paying for this turf for four extra years, which deserves some note, and we can all note that. But Greg Wolfe convinced me when he talked about the sprinkler and a problem at the high school, if there's a fire, I'm with him on that. I would vote on that first.
Thank you very much. Closing statements now. We turn now to closing statements, and this time I think we will go, rather than from left to right, let us begin with Mr. Tedesco.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for the organization of this program. I'm asking the voter of Cheshire's to vote for me for Town Council at Large this year. The reasons are, I'm a longtime resident, I consider Cheshire my hometown, even though I didn't go to high school here, which is normally the rule if you want to make your hometown, but I consider it my hometown after 46 years. I have a long history of community and government activities, which I went through earlier in the program tonight. If elected, I will work to keep Cheshire a great place to live. I will put in the necessary time. I will listen to constituents. I've published in my walk card my phone number and my email address, so people can call me, even if I'm elected, they can call me whenever they would like. I will try to find a location once a month to meet with residents, to hear what they're thinking. I will try to show leadership through persuasion, consensus-building, and respect for others, and never forget that holding public office is a privilege that comes with the responsibility to act in a manner worthy of that privilege.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bartley.
Thanks to all those who organized, moderated, and managed this forum. As a town councillor, I believe that Cheshire residents are not just constituents, but customers. As residents, we pay our tax dollars, and in return, we expect a local government that listens and responds to our community's needs and priorities. So what can you expect from me? The bigger the issue, the greater the impact of an action than an action might have, the more I will ask for your input, early and often, no surprises. To me, that's just good customer service. I will bring the same sense of urgency that I have when I manage my money to managing
I will bring the same sense of urgency that I have when I manage my money to managing yours. I will find innovative ways to close out, to close out communities' communication gap so that we have, we all are better informed and better connected. I look forward to serving you on Cheshire's Town Council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Greg Wolf. I am running for reelection for Town Council at Large. When elected, I will continue to listen to residents, town staff, state agencies, and legal representation to make decisions for the best interest of the town. These decisions are rooted in what will make Cheshire a better place to call home. I am committed to maintaining the high level of service provided by the town of Cheshire. I will work to involve the community in decisions, in decision-making, and appreciate their income, input in how our town evolves. I believe in investing in our infrastructure and will work to support the continual modernization of our schools, roadways, and parks. It is not the time to go back to the old ways of deferring investment in our town to keep taxes artificially low. It is time to take on the challenges for the next generation of Cheshire. We can work together to find reasonable solutions to our hard problems by having productive conversations. I believe in elected officials listening to constituents' voices, but it is critical to respect the process and maintain decency to achieve a healthy dialogue. Thank you to my colleagues, neighbors, friends, family, and especially my magnificent girlfriend. Your support truly is the air in my tires. Thank you, Cheshire, and I look forward to serving this community for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnstone.
I'd like to start off by thanking the Chamber of Commerce, Yetta and her team for putting this together. It's very important, especially for me as a new resident of the town. The opportunity to speak to you today has been something, one of the things that you struggle when you move to a new town. In my old town, I was three kids, coach, everything, and we knew most of the people. But you struggle here to try to meet new people, and it's been a blessing to be able to be part of this, and especially to be part of the team of candidates. They've all been welcoming, knowledgeable, and a pleasure to work with over the past several months, and I've learned so much. I ask for your vote to somebody that will dedicate its, all of his efforts. Thank, as my wife would say, thank you that I'm retired so that I can do that. And I think she wants me out of the house, so. I'd like to thank you again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Talbot.
Thank you again to everyone for providing us this opportunity. We are four days away from early voting, 19 days away from Election Day. Look at Cheshire today, a beautiful Bartlam Park, a soon-to-be-renovated Mixville Park, an outstanding, highly-rated school system. We have dedicated, hard-working town staff that keep us safe, maintain our schools, maintain our roads, maintain our recreation facilities, abundant cultural services, social service that aids seniors and help individuals dealing with physical and mental illness, as well as those residents who need a helping hand. This is the Cheshire that we know and love. I ask for your vote to keep us moving forward, to continue to focus on the things that make our community great. I pledge to work to maintain as many of our great services as possible. This is not a time to move backwards. It's an opportunity to grow and thrive. Please vote in this critically important local election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Malone.
I did not prepare a statement because I wanted to see what we spoke about tonight and decide what was important when we ended. And I wanted to say two things. First of all, one, that in the two terms I've been on the council, I've been impressed with everyone who served on the council, with their commitment to the town, with their concern to try and do the right thing for the community across the board. I've also been, as an insider, very impressed with our town government. The sincerity of all of our department heads, the concern they have for the residents, the concern they have for our community, how hard they work to do the best for us. But we are in a difficult time right now, and there is, I sense, a lack of leadership which could, which could contaminate our community. Too much partisan politics going on. It needs to stop. If I'm elected, there will be no partisan politics.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson.
When I joined the Town Council, we re-envisioned management of solid waste, creating a brand-new Sustainability Committee. This committee, which I proudly chaired, reviewed our waste management contracts, our school food waste diversion and composting programs, as well as energy savings proposals. In collaboration with the Board of Education, we successfully fast-tracked projects for our schools before federal rebates expired for solar, and that will save us almost $4 million over 20 years. We need town leadership that acknowledges values and prioritizes these needs while protecting our most socio-economically vulnerable residents. All parts of a municipality are interconnected: our schools, our parks, our economic development, our human services, our taxes, and, as we have learned over this past decade, our literal health and well-being. We need town leadership that is respectful, patient, and thoughtful. I am that kind of leader. I thank you all for your time this evening, being here. I, Fiona Pearson, hope to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bulger.
I just wanted to say thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate you hearing me out. The kids that are involved in this is awesome. It just shows you how involving and welcoming we are. I'd like to say transparency and less fighting over a party line would be huge. And you have my vow that I will do my best to maintain that the whole time. There's going to be some partisan politics, but when we walk down those stairs into the parking lot, we're still neighbors. We're still sports parents. We shake each other's hands after the games. More civility between everybody is really where I'm pushing. And if you ask me a question and I don't know the answer, I promise I will do my best to knock on the doors to get the answer you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Menke.
As I stated in the opening, I love Cheshire. I've been here my whole life, and as a teacher, I've contributed to the town. I know I've been very quiet tonight. I am a very careful listener. I'm a learner, and I'm a thinker. That's part of being an educator. And I know when you're in the classroom, the things that you're thinking about are collaboration, discussion. Those are all the things that we're guiding our students to do all the time. We also are constantly in a classroom, getting ourselves into places that sometimes we don't want to be, and we do have to work together to make sure we get to the next place. The struggle is the learning, and it's the best part of what we do. Cheshire is a desirable place to live. You're all here. I'm here. We're here because we love it. How do we grow slowly and purposefully welcoming change and keeping our community? I know I'm excited to explore the solutions and to be part of the conversation that leads to that place, and I hope that you will support me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Falk.
Thank you for everybody that's come out tonight, and especially our youth. I can't say that enough. What do I bring to the table? I've been on the council before. I've been a police officer for 20 years. I served eight years in the military. There's not a situation you can't throw at me that I have not been directly involved in. And when it comes to leadership, when it comes to accountability, integrity, commitment, citizenship, patriotism, you know, those are all the core values that we need in society. And I love our town. I grew up here, my children grew up here, my father grew up here, and I'm entrenched. You know, one of the things I took on recently was going on the Board of Directors for the YMCA. Why? Not that I had a ton of time left in my day, but my grandfather was involved. I was involved with the Y. My kids were. It's a great organization for the town. Why am I involved, and as a VFW commander? Because I love our veterans. I love what they do, and I love supporting them. And I look forward to supporting the citizens of Cheshire.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that ends our first session. I think we should give them all a round of applause. So we'll take about a five-minute break, so you can get up and stretch out for a little bit while we get set up.
Okay, if we could all take our seats so that we can get started, please. Okay, we're gonna get started with the second session. Please take your seats. Everybody, please take your seats. So we can get started.
Wait for her to get up there, okay? That's it. Okay, we're all set to go. Well, welcome, everyone. We're going to begin with candidate introductions, and we'll go left to right on this, and we'll start with Mr. Veleber. Veleber, yes. I get it wrong every year.
That's all right. Just somewhere in the ballpark. I usually answer that. Thank you and good evening. My name is David Veleber. It's been an honor and a privilege and a blessing to have served as the town council for the first district over the past eight years. I've lived in Cheshire for almost forty-seven years. My wife and I are raising our four daughters here, and we want Cheshire to continue to be a wonderful place for all to live and possibly raise a family, as well as a place where seniors can continue to live without being forced out by high taxes and existing in new businesses' desire to operate. Current council majority team has begun to move us away from that affordability with tax increases over twelve percent in just two years, as well as lack transparency, accountability, and inclusion in its actions. It's time for a change in leadership and vision for Cheshire. It's essential that we focus on keeping our taxes low to protect property values and keep the town affordable and attractive to all residents and businesses, maintaining and improving our excellent education system, including continuing to modernize our existing infrastructure in a fiscally prudent and a responsible manner to properly educate our children and fostering quality, prudent economic growth to help increase tax rolls while balancing maintaining Cheshire's small community feel and protecting our neighborhoods. Thank you, and thank you to the chamber for putting this together.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barnes?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Lori Barnes. I'm running-- oh, sorry, Jim. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Barnes, and I'm running for town council because I believe our community deserves transparency, accountable accountability, and leadership that listens. I've lived in Cheshire my whole life, born and raised on a produce farm on the North End. I care deeply about about how our town is managed, where our money goes, how our decisions are made, and how those choices affect everyday people. I believe in fiscal responsibility, spending wisely, and keeping taxes fair while still meeting the real needs of our residents. Most importantly, I want to bring transparency back to local government because you should always know what's being decided and why. And whether you're a Democrat, Republican, independent, or just someone who loves this town, I'll always be someone you can talk to. I believe in listening to every voice, finding common ground, and doing what's right for our community. Together, we can make sure our town stays strong, honest, and accountable.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jinks?
Thank you. My name is Jim Jinks. I'm the second district town councillor. This is not the message or the intro that I had hoped to give tonight, but there's a message that I'd like to 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 state. I feel it's important to say it tonight. In twenty eighteen, I started Bike Cheshire with the idea of making Cheshire a safer place for adults and kids to ride around town. These are a few of the things we've done. We started with a community bike share. We had many of the very popular bike-to-school rides starting in twenty nineteen. And in twenty twenty-three, we started safe riding classes for Cheshire's elementary school kids. Those are just a few of the things we have done. Let me tell you what we have not done. We never pretended to be a five oh one C three. We initially registered with the state as a nonprofit with a board and bylaws. But even then, we never represented ourselves as a five oh one C three. We never solicited funds as a five oh one C three. We never applied for grants independently. We applied for grants only twice. On both occasions, the Coalition for Sustainable Cheshire was our sponsor, both times, and funds went to the coalition. Why am I telling you this? Because my opponents are trying to discredit not only me, but this group of advocates who work tirelessly to help make our community safer for our kids.
Okay.
They're not telling you what they'll do for our community. Instead, they've engaged in a smear campaign disparaging a group of community advocates and really only hurting the kids.
Time's up. Finish the sentence. Go ahead. Finish the sentence, and then we'll move on.
This is politics at its worst. It's a sad day for Cheshire when our supposed leaders are willing to go this low. It's a shame to have to make this statement, but I'll not sit back as the work of so many good people is slandered and scandalized for cheap local gain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. Hello, I'm Don Walsh. I'm currently the finishing my third term on the Cheshire Town Council representing the third district. My wife Jennifer and I have lived in Cheshire for twenty-nine years, where we raised our two children, Kara and Patrick. I was the founder and president of Cheshire's Lights of Hope and and now also one of the founding directors of a new charity called Hope for Our Neighbors, which supports homeless individuals and works to prevent homelessness in Cheshire. I hold a degree in business economics and a graduate gemologist degree. Over six years ago, I started DW Gem Services, a small business here in Cheshire. In my first four years on the Republican-controlled council, we navigated the pandemic, approved two new schools, developed Bartlam and Micksville Parks, and supported new economic development in the North End while keeping the tax manageable. I'm proud of these achievements. The last two years, the minority have been in the minority, we it has been filled with the controversy of the Health Department interference and turnover, costly investigations into our animal control facility, and a twelve point six percent rise in taxes. Cheshire must remain attractive and affordable. We cannot sustain such increases as a community leader, a business owner, a homeowner, and experienced town councilman. I'm committed to continuing to serve and represent the third district and all of Cheshire. I believe my background and dedication will help keep Cheshire strong and vibrant for everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stavola?
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you to the chamber for organizing this forum. I'm Michael Stavola, and I'm running to represent District Four. My wife Kelly and I moved to Cheshire in twenty nineteen with our two children, Anthony and Adriana, who are active in Cheshire's youth sports programs. We love this town and the strong sense of of community we feel here. I have a bachelor's from the University of Connecticut and an MBA from Boston University, and professionally, I've spent over twenty years in the beverage industry, leading sales and commercial strategy teams. My priorities are very, very clear: keep taxes fair, keep our town safe, help our children thrive, protect our seniors, and ensure our dollars are spent responsibly. I'll bring fiscal discipline, honesty, and accountability to the council because Cheshire deserves better leadership and greater transparency. Together, we can build a safer, stronger, and more affordable future for our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kramer?
Hi, thank you all for being here. Civic engagement is absolutely fantastic, and I love seeing it. My name is Tricia Kramer. I am the current District Four representative for Cheshire. As a former small business owner, educator-wife, and proud sports mom of two growing and eternally busy boys, while managing real health challenges, I understand firsthand the everyday struggles and hopes of Cheshire families. My journey is one of many women. My journey is one that many women know well. We lead through strength and grit. I truly believe that the Cheshire voters knew exactly what they were doing with voting who they voted in two years ago. We have been a diverse group of advocates for the community, trying to move us forward sustainably while keeping the most vulnerable amongst us protected. I'm looking forward to this debate tonight, and let's go.
Thank you very much.
Paul Calus could not join us tonight, but he did provide a statement that I will read right now. When my father passed away in nineteen ninety-two, I decided to move to Cheshire to take care of my mom and to get her through this difficult time. At the same time, I was fortunate to be hired as an administrator for the Cheshire Public Schools, which made my transition that much more convenient. Little did I know that I would make Cheshire my home for the next thirty-three years. My platform is clear. I want the school system to continue to provide an excellent education for all students. The police and the fire departments must have the resources they need to keep our citizens safe. Taxes must be closely examined with a goal to reduce the tax burden for all homeowners. As assistant superintendent of schools, I expanded my leadership role in the school system. In addition to my responsibilities for special services, I added the areas of personnel, building maintenance, and facility expansion. I also took the lead in transportation services and the school lunch program. I was responsible for developing the five-year capital expenditure plan for the Board of Education and was the liaison to the Board of Education for policy and planning. During this time, I worked closely with the town manager and department heads to coordinate services between the school system and the town. To close, I have provided proven compassionate leadership to the Cheshire Public Schools for seventeen years, and I will bring that same leadership as member of the town council. I know the community. I know the school district, and I can successfully lead it as the town council member.
Thank you very much. We turn now to the questions. The first question is going to go to Ms. Barnes. Okay. What is your preference for future future use of the North End fifty-eight acres owned by the state?
So my preference, I'm a lifer down the North End, is probably for it to get mixed use. I don't see it as a heavy industrial. I don't think that we can take that down at the North End. I don't know what that looks like. I'm really new to this, so I'm trying to be thoughtful in talking with everybody and getting feedback from everybody, but you can't please everybody. So initially, the plan that we looked at on the North End that we said this isn't gonna go well, that a lot of people came out and said, this needs to go away, and we were able to make that happen. But as for right now, I would say it would have to be a mixed use, not overindustrialized. That's my that's my plan for it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Mr. Jinks?
I think the plan going forward is first and foremost to have a full conversation with the community and to get an understanding, this time a better understanding of what they really want there and what what is kind of appropriate for that that spot. So that would be the important first step in going forward.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Walsh?
Well, I think the town has invested quite a bit of money in that to develop that property already. When we put in the sewers sewer lines and the water lines up there, we built it so that that part of the land could be developed. So if we don't do the proper development up there, it's gonna it's cost the town quite a bit of money. Much of that land is not developable anyway, and so there is a portion of it that is and can be developed, and I think, as Mr. Jinks said, we we need to have a meeting with the the neighbors, the residents, and a group of people to see what is the best use of that property. But it needs to be have some kind of development going on there in order to help with the economic development that the state conveyed to us for that reason. So I'm hoping that we can do that.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Kramer?
I think we'd be remiss not to point out what the North End development showed us. We saw community activism like in the last two years I'd never seen in Cheshire. A community came together, rallied the entire council around its concerns. We heard their concerns, and we took our time, and we decided against the development that was proposed. We also are looking to work together in tandem with the state, which I think is incredibly important for any municipality when you have something that that's grandiose and can make such an impact on not only a small local community, but all of Cheshire with its grand list growth. We need to give that piece of property the thought and attention that it deserves for what it represents to Cheshire, which is community activism and all of the community gathering together for the benefit and progress of our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can say something?
Yes, you can respond. It counts as a response.
Okay, it's just kind of in dual. I agree with basically everything that everybody's said, but I want to highlight what Don said that because initially I am about open space and I come from a produce farm, so I love open space and but we do have some money invested in this property, so to be a response, but we need to also take a look at that and see what money we've invested and what we have to do for this land use to be smart with what money we have already invested.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving to the next question here. This question will go to Mr. Stavola. What is your plan to address the overdevelopment in Cheshire?
Thank you for the question. I I think the overdevelopment or the perceived overdevelopment in Cheshire, I think some of it needs to be management of all of our expectations, quite frankly. Cheshire's growing. The town is very desirable, and there's a tremendous amount of people that want to live and and work and be in Cheshire. So I I think that's the first one, to to really make sure that we all understand kind of what, you know, what the town is and and why people want to be here. You know, secondly, I think overdevelopment, or I think development in general, as long as we have development in the appropriate areas, I think is I think is important. In principle, I, you know, I support open space. I support development. But in the appropriate areas, making sure that we talk to the people of the town, the residents that it directly impacts, and making sure that there is full transparency and communication around it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Okay, Ms. Kramer?
I don't want to use up all my minutes, but overdevelopment in town is a really huge issue for right now, so I just want to address it. We've put together a traffic study, which I think is a really good step in looking at our town as a map and seeing where the congestion is, why it's happening, and possibly how we can drive communities to use other use other places to grow, other land to be developed, diversion of traffic. We just had a town council meeting this week, and I don't know if you've heard of them, but the Bowman's were here to speak. Heard of them? And a really shocking statistic that they said, and I'm going to believe them, was that there's only about a thousand more residences to be built in town. So having that number in mind with our sustainability and our our plan of community growth, I think it's a a great number and a great way to look to see how we're gonna steer Cheshire and keep Cheshire Cheshire.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Stavola?
I I just want to mention the the traffic study that that Tricia mentioned. Look, I think it's a fantastic thing, and I think it's something that we needed to do, and we all understand. I mean, all of us and any of us that drive these roads every day, like, see the congestion and see what's going on. One main component, though, that I think should have been the primary focus is safety and safety on our roads. I myself personally have had numerous situations where I've almost been in major accidents, speeding, people running stop signs, etc. So I think component of it needs to be or a larger component needs to be traffic safety, law, you know, traffic law enforcement, making sure that we're keeping residents, our children, safe, and really taking a look at how some of the roadways have turned into, you know, quiet neighbors quiet neighborhoods have turned into essentially cut-throughs, and the the increase in traffic has become unmanageable for some roads.
Thank you very much. Moving along to the next question, unless anybody else would like to respond? Mr. Walsh, yes?
Yeah, well, I want to save my minutes, too, but I'm gonna I I I just felt I needed to comment on this. One of the biggest issues that's facing many towns in Connecticut right now is the House Bill five zero zero two, which is could cause a real problem in our town if it's passed. From what I have been told by our town planner, it could cause us to be forced to build another seven hundred apartments in this town. There's a lot of things, and I think as a council, we need to take a stand and say, listen, talk to our state legislators, the ones right here, and ask them to please work for Cheshire on this one. work for Cheshire on this one and try to keep, keep the control of the, the building in the hands of our planning and zoning and not out of their hands." I think it's most important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along. Mr. Veleber, I have a question for you. Many roads are being used in unsafe manners, speeding, illegal passing, not stopping for school buses, especially those roads being used to bypass the congestion on Routes 10, 68, and 70. What actions would you recommend to improve the safety on these roads?
Thank you very much. That is a great question, because it is clear, you know, traffic is a, an issue in town. I know, you know, nobody, you know, and nobody's going to dispute the fact that Route 10 is a little bit of a difficult drive at any kind, any time of the day. So ultimately, many of our side streets do become more and more used as cut-through streets, so it is definitely something that we need to focus on. We do need to start working with our police department to work on ways for traffic management, as well as giving them the tools to do traffic enforcement. We have police officers that we can ultimately utilize for that, and we need to get into that more, because traffic safety is a big issue, especially those who live on those streets that go from twenty-five mile an hour streets but become more like fifty-five mile an hour streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Mr. Jenks.
Yeah, I mean, the, the traffic, Mr. Stavola mentioned the, the traffic safety being a big issue. Of course, we have heavy traffic in some areas of town. The bigger issue, I think, actually is safety on some of our secondary roads, and that's the reason why I supported and many of us supported a, a traffic study finally for us to be conducted, where we're not only looking at, you know, where traffic is coming from and the traffic counts, but we also want to, you know, do some traffic calming in some of our, our neighborhood streets and, and make it so that it's actually safer for drivers and people on bikes and people walking. So we have a, a town that's growing, a lot of traffic comes with that, but it doesn't have to feel like a big town. We can actually make our neighborhoods safer, make our streets a little safer for all of us by improving safety in our, on our streets.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to the next question, unless anybody has a response. Okay, next question. This will be directed, Mr. Jenks, I'll come back to you with this. With the increase in construction and population growth, how would you ensure the police and fire departments are fully supported to provide these essential services?
Well, we fully support them through the budget. We, right now, the police department has a, a staff of, full staff, pretty much of forty-eight now. We may want to look at increasing that, because I do think that we want to, and they've had some changes in how they're going to have different shifts or number, number of officers on each shift, so we could perhaps have a more traffic, more traffic enforcement going on. But obviously, we, we support the fire, fire department, support the police department in town through the budget, and we're always looking to, I think, do as much as we can for both of those departments. But it's, you know, because it's very important.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Yes, Mr. Veleber.
Thank you. I mean, police, you know, we've, we've all seen the town has grown, and the, you know, that's a very good point. When it comes to police and fire, public safety is a very important issue for me. I'm sure it's public, probably, for everyone on, on the council. I think it's very important. One of the things that, you know, I think about, we, we've talked about with the budget and supporting the police officers, we are up to a relatively full, you know, we just have one retirement, so, but we are working on that, bringing in more police officers. And as my, as I've been on the council, I've always supported the police officers, supported their plans for what is the best for them and what the, the tools and services they need. What also we need to do is continue to focus on our fire department. Right now, we are volunteer fire department. We need to continue to provide incentives for volunteer fired, fighters to continue to serve in that capacity. But with the growth, especially in the North End, we may need to see more physical structures as well, including police and fire in the North End, and so that'll be something that the council is going to have to look at as a capital project going forward.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kramer, I'll give you a question here. We have seen that there is a great deal of animosity between the two parties. If you are elected, what do you plan to do to work not only with those in your party, but those on the other side to create a unified town council?
Deep breath. So this election cycle's been very unique. I did not experience this two years ago. It's been a bit personal and sometimes contentious, and I believe people have been acting beneath them at times. It does make it hard to work together as a cohesive unit, but I think that as we sit here, month after month, if we, after we sit through meeting after meeting, we listen to each other's discussions, opinions, the way that we live our lives and we bring it before each other to, to debate it and work through any preconceived notions. What we're left with at the end of the day is who we are as people. We have to always act with integrity, kindness, and honesty. And one thing you always get from me is authenticity. If I'm upset, you know it. If I agree, you know it. If I disagree, you don't. And I think anybody who's worked with me on the town council can agree to that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who would like to respond? Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. Ban Facebook. That's it. I mean, ban Facebook. Facebook has become one of the, the, the most difficult things out there. Social media, people say things, somebody puts a post up and automatically somebody from the other side is putting some obnoxious post back on it, there's going back and forth and back and forth, and it gets ridiculous after time. And I don't think you're really changing anybody's minds on that stuff. At the end of the day, you know, I might not agree with all my colleagues on the council, but I know we're all here for the same reason, because we love our town, we want to make sure what's best. We might not agree with how we're going to get there or what we're going to do to make it better, but at the end of the day, we put in a lot of time and hours on this, and I don't think the people out there in Facebook land understand how much time we actually really do give to this community. And, you know, I, I, I will try to treat as many of my colleagues with respect as I can. I mean, I, I, that's all we can do. And, you know, I, I just think that the social media aspect of it has really hurt this community a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Kramer.
I really need to mention our, our, our need to look at ourselves as role models. We have sitting here a group of involved youth from town. I've spoken before to them before, and I always tell them, "Use your voice." And I tell them, "Use your voice for your, your opinions, use your voice to stand up for yourself, and use your voice in a kind and honest way to speak up for those who can't speak up for themselves." So to answer this question on partisanship, they have social media, we all use social media, we have national politics and local politics. They're seeing firsthand from us how to interact with the world around us. We need to be able to show them ways in which we can disagree, compromise, and work together towards unique goals that fit everybody's needs and to respect everybody around you.
Thank you very much. Response.
Thank you very much. Yes, this issue is one that, you know, is actually, you know, something that I was, you know, thankful we had an opportunity to speak about. You know, it is very important, and I do agree with the idea that a lot of this, unfortunately, is, is Facebook-based, but just, I think culturally, we're, we're getting more and more divisive, and we're getting further and further away from each other. But one of the things I want to stress is that, you know, civility is a two-way street, is one, you know, it seems to be implied here by some of the Democrats that it's only the Republicans who are uncivil. And so I just wanted to stress, I mean, you could see hints of the lack of civility in the first group that was up here. Civility starts with the top and the leadership, and that is not there. The, the minority has been treated, I think, very poorly by this current council, and it has not been inclusive. And we need to bring that together in order for us to get back to a level of civility. If elected, and I was, and, and lucky to be part of the leadership, I would pledge to promote civility among all members of the council, treat all members with equal ideas and in all aspects of the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to respond? Okay, then, I believe, Mr. Walsh, we have a question for you. With the growth in student enrollment in our schools, what is the next step to ensure we have the resources and facilities to handle this growth?
Thank you. There is growth in our, in our students. We're still not where we were twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. We had almost five thousand students, so, so we're not there yet, but I think the, the best way to deal with it is, you know, to have a, a Board of Education who is the, they're the group that is going to have to deal with this. Every time that we get to doing a budget and we say, "We, we want to cut the budget of the Board of Ed," they say, "Well, where are you going to cut?" It's really not the town council's role to decide where to cut. I mean, we cut $2 million right off the budget, right off the bat, and nobody said where we're going to cut it from, but, you know, when we want to take another $600,000 off, it's like, "Oh, no, where are you going to cut it from? Where are you going to cut it from?" So, you know, it has to, you know, if, it's not up to us, and I know they, they threaten about losing teachers and everything else, but the bottom line is, I think we have a very good superintendent, we have a very good Board of Ed who can probably figure out a way to use the money, $95 million that we're giving them, to, to run the schools. And, you know, if, based on being on the school modernization, the school modernization showed that the numbers will be increasing for the next five years, ten years, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do when we get there.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Stavola.
Just to build on that a little bit, I think, I think investing strategically in the schools is, is important, right? And we, we've had the discussion before, we've talked about wants versus needs and those kind of things, but focusing on excellence in the classroom, you know, prioritizing projects that improve safety, I think those are very important, and we need to be thoughtful around how we spend and where we spend. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in a position that all the wants, you know, aren't in a position to be needs. So let's make sure we kind of keep our eyes on what's important, really set defined metrics and guidelines, and that's where we should be spending, things that are going to deliver and drive a really material return for the town and for the schools and for our students.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Jenks.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah, sure. The question was, with the growth in student enrollment in our schools, what is the next step to ensure we have the resources and facilities to handle this growth?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I mean, obviously, school modernization has been a, a long process that we're still engaged in. We have, you know, a middle school that's, the property is, is not really suitable for a middle school anymore. And then we have two other elementary schools that are obviously, you know, aging by the year, so until these two new schools are built, we still have, our newest school is fifty-four years old, so obviously, it's going to continue to be an issue. Unfortunately, more wasn't done sooner, so we're going to be behind the eight ball for quite some time. And I think frankly, you know, folks are going to have to be a little patient with, with how fast school modernization can go forward, but it is something that we do need to address.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick, quick question? Is that the last question to the panel? I don't want to leave any time left on the board.
That is the last question for, for individuals, yes.
Okay, so.
I do have a generic question that is going to be asked to everyone, because we have time.
It's the last arbitrary to respond to a question.
And so this is, would you like to respond to that question?
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, go ahead. Yep.
As far as school modernization goes, this is a discussion that's been going on for decades, and right now, I know I moved to this town for the schools for my boys, and it has not failed us. And more people are going to continue to move to Cheshire because of our stellar school system, especially with the development that's going on. We need to make sure that we are funding safety measures, which is why I was such a proponent of getting the turf on the referendum, and the school sprinkler system is obviously a no-brainer. There are projects that we cannot put off and must be put in the budget. When it comes to budget and the schools, it is about seventy percent of our budget. It cannot be denied, it needs to be done, it has to be done fiscally responsibly, and the more things that we can put to the citizens to decide where you want to spend your tax dollars, the better off we are as an entire community. So please review those referendum questions with a fine tooth comb and spend your tax dollars where they are most important to you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, I didn't want to leave any time on the clock either, so just, I, I served on the school modernization committee for two years when we, we determined that the two schools, the two elementary schools were the best avenue to be built. You know, I've, I've heard from fellow council people that it's because of thirty years of neglect, and I don't agree with that. During the last twenty-five years, first, the first, the early part of this century, we had the highest amount of students enrolled in our schools. It started dropping. When you start dropping students, it's not the time to start building new schools. I think, I think we did a good job in keeping these schools going, keeping them as modern as we could, keeping them up to date. The most important part of, of our education system is not the walls, it's the people inside that are teaching, and I think we have some of the best teachers and administrators in the state. So I think that's important to understand. And yes, we will continue to look at other schools in the future, but right now, let's get the two new schools open and see where we are from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veleber.
Thank you very much. Obviously, schools are very important to this town. It's one of the things that people move to, move to Cheshire for. It is our future, and I appreciate our students being here tonight and helping out with this. Obviously, two new schools are a start. We will see them come in line in the next couple of years, and I think that's very important. One of the things I do want to stress is that those schools were a result of the prior council's activism, activism to, the Republican council members took that up as a, a campaign promise to try to bring that to referendum, and we did that, and we were successful in getting that passed with the help of many members of the community. But more importantly, the issue is budget, the budget is going to get tighter and tighter as we get, as we get closer and closer to growing, and we're going to need to start facing more and more costs, and so we're going to need to provide for more and more efficient ways to work on the budget to be, may efficient, so that we have the resources to pay for the growth, growth of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay, here, we have time for a question for everyone, and we're going to go from Ms. Kramer down. And this question was asked of the, as at-large candidates as well. What do you feel is the most important referendum question to vote yes on?
So judging by the temperature of Cheshire, which is where we should always base our decisions on, considering we are here representing people, not our own beliefs, the number one issue right now in Cheshire is overdevelopment. The referendum to put originally two million, but worked down to 1.5 through compromise for an open space purchase availability is spot on with where this town is right now. Under that, I have to give respect to Peter Talbot. Every single one that we fought to put on referendum is important, and mostly so that we know as a council, where you, what's important to you, where do you want to spend your tax dollars? We know that if we're putting on referendum, you know it's important, so I hope for the discernment from the voters to pick. I also really want the turf done.
Mr. Stavola.
Let me check my handy sheet here in terms of all the referendum items. I would agree with, with Patricia said, I think the turf probably would be, you know, the most important item right now that I would like to see go through, just because it's past its usable life. The, it impacts a tremendous, you know, amount of, of students and youth, players that use that field. But I would say one thing in terms of the referendum items and something that, when elected, I will really champion and push forward, you know, as we move into the future. The impact to every taxpayer on these referendum items needs to be visible, and it needs to be there when you're voting. When you go in and you vote yes for something, you need When you go in and you vote yes for something, you need to know exactly what that cost is going to be to you, on average, right, but directionally. And I will make sure that when I'm elected, every referendum item moving forward will have the cost to all of you on here. So instead of just voting yes or no blindly, you will know the true impact to your household.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. I know the open space is a big thing for everybody, but I fought that. I felt that giving that much power to a nine-person council to buy that much property is not, you want to listen to the public. Everybody says, listen to the public. They come out and talk. But we're going to let nine people decide what, if we're going to buy a million and a half dollar piece of property? I think that's not fair to the taxpayers. I won't support that one. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. What I do feel is roads. Roads are important. I mean, we, nobody's mentioned roads, which is surprising to me, because it's, you know, it's not a pretty thing, but we need to take care of our roads. We normally have $2 million in our budget for roads, and this year, it's, I think, $800,000. Not nearly enough, but I think that's important, plus the school fire alarm system is important. And the turf. The turf has outlasted longer than we expected, so those three things are most important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks.
So the cost of all the referendum questions this year, if they were to pass, would be for the average taxpayer about $40 a year for the next 20 years. That's roughly what it would cost for the average taxpayer, just to answer your question. The, they're all important. They're all very important. That's why they're there. You know, the council felt that we needed to, these are capital projects that need to be done sooner rather than later, and that's why we're asking for the public to support those. For me, open space is the most important one. That's why I strongly supported that. Everyone has been talking about traffic and development and overdevelopment in the schools, so starting with adding more open space is very important. But they're all very important. The turf, the fire truck, even the loading dock, they're there because they're important, so I hope the committee will support them.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes.
Hi, thank you. So it's a tough one for me, because I really, really fought, because I wanted us to have that open space on the North End. I want us to keep that open space on the North End, but if I'm looking at it in hindsight, just health and safety are always really important. They're the most important things, they come before anything else, but it's a referendum, and that's the thing about it. You have to come out and vote, you all get to decide, you know, what you want in the community, but I would push, open space is important to me, but health and safety always trumps that. So like the sprinkler system at the high school, the fire truck, the turf, those types of things, those are safety things, health and safety, and I have serious concern about those. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Velliver.
Thank you. I guess, you know, we all have this list of, you know, this list of things, and we can all work our way through it, right? In terms of, you know, we've all got multiple things on that list. Open space is very important, but as mentioned earlier, the town has always had a history of maintaining a lot of open space and conservation land, so that goes along with the town's character already. But most importantly now, I think, are the safety issues, and as mentioned, I think the fire system at the high school is very important, but if I had to pick one, it'd be the turf field, because I think that field, we've been very lucky and very fortunate that that field has exceeded its lifetime, but it needs to be replaced, because it is such a community-used facility, and it's a safety issue too, if we don't replace it. And if it doesn't get replaced soon, it may impact football seasons going forward and other events. So they're all important, but I think if I had to pick one, it'd be the turf field. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We turn now to the concluding statements of the candidates. And I think rather than go left or right like we've done sometimes, let's begin with Mr. Jenks.
Okay.
Thank you to the chamber, thank you to the attendance here and students. I grew up in a working-class household. We didn't have much, but as kids, we didn't really know it. We had everything we needed. It was a neighborhood of ranch homes, capes, and if you were doing really well, maybe a raised ranch. It was the kind of neighborhood where everyone seemed to look after each other. The dads were all in the military, like my dad, or veterans working in the trades or in manufacturing. The moms were either homemakers, or worked as teachers, or bank tellers, or maybe a nurse. It was a place where service to others and community were important values and expected. My neighbors were my coaches and my scout leaders. I feel really fortunate to have grown up in that place and time. I've been on the council for six years. It's been a great privilege and an honor of my life. I've gained important experience and perspective over the past six years, but I'm still guided by the values ingrained in me from a young age: service to others, family, community, and looking after each other. This is who I am and will continue to be. I'm here trying to make this town better. I'm not trying to gain anything from this position. I'm not running for office out of ideological or personal vengeance. We're coming apart as a country, and now, based on the behavior of some candidates, I'd say we're coming apart as a community. I urge you all, I urge Cheshire, to think really hard about who you want as your voice in the council, the Board of Ed, planning and zoning, and so on. It really is more important than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you to the chamber, thank you, Yeta, thank you, Mark, thank you, Professor Rose for putting this together, and thank you to the students for keeping time. Give me an extra five seconds though, because I wanted to thank you first. One of the most rewarding parts of serving as your town councillor is connecting with our community. I value the diverse backgrounds of residents and consider this diversity in my decision-making. We must balance managing taxes so they don't become a burden with maintaining our parks, our roads, infrastructure to attract new residents and businesses. Serving the people of the 3rd District is my passion. I've always gone above and beyond to help neighbors and serve all of Cheshire, regardless of district. I'm excited about the new schools, parks, and development in the North End. These achievements were made possible with honest, transparent Republican leadership, values I hold myself to and that I have found has sometimes been overlooked these past two years by our majority. With our support, we can continue to build a more affordable, vibrant Cheshire based on integrity and accountability. I thank you for your vote on November 4th.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, chamber, and thank you to the students, thank you to everybody for coming out. I was born and raised here in Cheshire. I chose to raise my family here. I grew up very modest in the North End. For 15 years of my adult life, I worked in customer relations, learning the value of listening, teamwork, and always treating people with respect. I believe leadership means being present, transparent, and accountable. My faith inspires my service. Accountability, honesty, and communication matter more now than ever. I'm committed to helping lower taxes and making sure your tax dollars are spent wisely. I will work to guide development in a way that makes sense for Cheshire, supporting progress while preserving our unique character and standing up for the North End. I will listen and talk with anyone, advocating for the well-being of our town's animals and promoting open, honest conversations about their care. I look forward to working with anybody in the town, talking with anybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stavola.
Wanted to say thank you again to everyone. Thank you to the students. I know it's a school night, but, you know, thank you for being here and listening to this. I think this is fantastic to see. I feel like years ago, you wouldn't have seen this. It really is a tremendously great thing to see, you know, young people out here involved in politics, so thank you. In closing, I'm running because I believe Cheshire deserves better. Cheshire deserves leadership that's more engaged, more transparent, and truly accountable to every resident. I love this town. My family loves this town, and I'm committed to working hard on its behalf. I want to ensure Cheshire remains a place where families can thrive, where seniors feel supported, and our children have every opportunity to succeed. I will fight to keep taxes fair, keep our neighborhoods and roads safe, and ensure every dollar we spend reflects the priorities of our community. This town deserves honesty, results in leaders who listen, and that's exactly what I'll bring to the council. On election day, and well, on election day and throughout early voting too, I'm asking for your trust, your support, and your vote. I believe we could build a safer, stronger, and more affordable future for Cheshire. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Velliver.
Thank you very much, and I'll echo the idea. Thank you all for the chamber and all those in organizing this event tonight. Thank you for moderating and hosting, and thank you to all the students out here tonight. I'm sure this is probably better than doing homework. We've talked tonight about many issues facing the town. It goes to emphasize just how important this election is for the future of Cheshire. Decisions made now will have a significant impact on its future. Cheshire needs new disciplined leadership for an affordable future with the town council team to make difficult decisions for the benefit of all Cheshire. The 1st District needs a councillor who's experienced and dedicated to not only the town, but also the district and its residents. We need someone who will tirelessly take on both Cheshire's and the district's issues, listen to the concerns of its residents, and advocate for those concerns, including things like bulky waste pickup, increasing tax exemptions for seniors, veterans, and the disabled, the blight ordinance, and advocacy for citizen groups and animals. That is the level of dedication, leadership, and experience I will continue to bring to the town council if reelected. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent and advocate for the residents of the 1st District these past eight years, and I'd be honored and privileged to continue to work and advocate for you if reelected, and I pledge to work with all members of the new council, regardless of party.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Kramer.
Thank you, Yeta. You are a stellar role model for community engagement and involvement, and we wouldn't be here if it weren't for you. Thank you again this year. You guys again ran a great debate. Young Dem and young Republicans, thank you from the bottom of my heart for showing us why we're doing this, not only doing this to help the town, to support you, but we're trying to be role models for participation in local government. And my husband and my son who are here, thank you for everything over the last two years. You know how to make a girl feel special. I want to remain focused, if I'm elected again, on the future, working to ensure Cheshire grows wisely, sustains what makes it special, and doesn't fall behind. We're facing real challenges, especially around infrastructure and our aging school facilities. Meeting those challenges requires clear priorities, fiscal responsibility, and courageous leadership that doesn't flinch at complexity or personal attacks. With your vote for me, you're choosing steady, inclusive leadership, leadership that invests in progress without leaving behind our most vulnerable neighbors. I will continue to fight for a town that protects working families, honors our seniors, helps preserve our neighborhoods, farms, green spaces, and builds a future that includes everyone. Again, I'm asking for your vote. Let's move forward together.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Nice round of applause. So before we go, just, so everyone knows, this has been broadcast on the Town Channel 14, so tell your friends, tell your neighbors, they get a chance to look at it. And lastly, let's all get out and vote. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you.